Good evening, welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education work session, actually it says work session, business meeting. Today is Monday, December 11th, 2017. I will start with a call to order and initially observe a moment of silence in memory of Alyssa Colossi, who passed away on December 7th, and she was a Mount Pleasant Middle School student. Please join me in rising for the presentation of colors by the J.M. Robinson High School Junior ROTC Color Guard. It's always great to see the performances and listen to them and enjoy what the students have been learning, and just the teamwork involved to do these presentations. So the presentation of colors from the J.M. Robinson High School Junior ROTC Color Guard included Cadet Second Lieutenant Cameron Carland, Cadet Technical Sergeant Paris Carter, Cadet Technical Sergeant Sarah Lucivita, and Cadet Major Bryce Punselen. The cadets are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose and Master Sergeant Mickey Kissler. The National Anthem was presented by the Central Cabarrus Band Ensemble under the direction of Tyler Stark. The members of the band present were Ryan Barrows, Tanner Fries, Samantha Knapp, Kyle Lilly, Emily Pennell, Erin Perez, Nina Quivado, Brett Roberts, Dejani Scruttings, Stephen Smith, Megan Steed, and Isaac Kanesh. Let's give them a round of applause for their participation tonight. I'd also like to recognize Deputy Drake from Bethel Elementary, who's here to provide security for our meeting tonight. Thank you for being here. Board members, take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries 6-0, and maybe these will be the last motions we have at 6-0. Before we proceed with recognitions, our board attorney would like to have the finalist for the board vacancy join him out in the hall. There's a piece of paperwork that you might do if you filed at the Board of Elections that you need to sign as far as your eligibility for office. So he'll see you out in the hallway. Thank you. So for recognitions, we have the Teacher Assistant of the Year, Mrs. Glenda Jones.
Good evening. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year program honors the contributions of pre-kindergarten through 12th grade teacher assistants to their schools, communities, and profession. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year will be submitted as a finalist in the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants of the Year program. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year must meet the following eligibility requirements in order for Cabarrus County Schools to submit to the NCATA Teacher Assistant Program. The Teacher Assistant of the Year must be a member of the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants for two consecutive years prior to the nomination. The Teacher Assistant of the Year must be employed as a teacher assistant for a minimum of two years prior to the nomination. The district winner, Teacher Assistant of the Year, must submit a portfolio. So we are here this evening to celebrate and to recognize our Teacher Assistants of the Year and our District Teacher Assistant of the Year. So tonight, we would like to recognize our Teacher Assistants of the Year first, and then we're going to announce our District Teacher Assistant of the Year. And I'm going to start with A.T. Allen Elementary School, Jana Ritchie; Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School, Stephanie Newton; C.C. Griffin Middle School, Heather Workman, and she's not here tonight; C.A. Fur Elementary, Trudy Mertz, who's not here; Central Cabarrus High School, Kim Good; Charles D. Boger Elementary School, Michelle Gilrith, not here; Cox Mill Elementary School, Jan Johnson; H.E. Winkler Middle School, Kristy Klein; Hickory Ridge High School, Kay Parker, could not be with us tonight; and Hickory Ridge Middle School, Timothy Cobert, could not be here as well; J.M. Robinson High School, LeVar Batts; Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Joy Whidden, is not here with us tonight; Patriot STEM Elementary School, Maria Shanks; Pitt School, Road Elementary School, Johanna Altshuler; R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School, Carrie Kern; W.M. Irvin Elementary, Susan Faggert, could not be with us tonight; W.R.O.L. Odell Primary School, Jennifer Carlson; Weddington Hills Elementary School, Kelly Lewis; Wyancoff Elementary School, Linda Mitchell; and Wolf Meadow Elementary School, Michelle Johnson. Now I want us to give all these folks a round of applause before we announce our winner. And we would like to announce our district winner as Rocky River Elementary School, Ms. Judy York. If you'll just turn and go through and shake hands with everyone there, that would be great. Everybody step forward for me. All right, now turn and go. There you go. I saw my teacher assistant down there trying to guide. You're welcome, congratulations.
Get going.
She's going back door. I think I'm next again, right? And now we'll have the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month to be presented by Mrs. Glenda Jones and Dr. Chris Lauter.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. It's always my pleasure to present our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Before we begin, I'd like to express our continued appreciation to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their support and generosity. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for December is Jenny Cruz. Ms. Cruz, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Jenny Cruz is a first-grade teacher at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by parents who wrote. Ms. Cruz is an exceptional teacher. She is firm but fair, and has been just what our son and our family needed this year to help support his emotional and educational growth. Our son is very intelligent but has had emotional issues that have affected his behavior. Over the summer, we were able to put interventions in place that increased positive behavior. At the beginning of the school year, I shared this information with Ms. Cruz, and she has been more than willing to utilize these interventions and strategies to continue the positive gains we accomplished this summer. In addition, she is very thoughtful about how changes in the schedule and curriculum will affect our son. She works as a team with us to pre-plan changes and to prepare him ahead of time to prevent anxiety and negative outbursts that typically would have resulted in the past. We cannot say enough positive things about Ms. Cruz. Because of her, our son loves school and is excelling academically as well as behaviorally. We know that teaching can be a thankless job, however, this award would be one way to say, "Thank you, Jenny Cruz is more than deserving of this award." So Ms. Cruz, congratulations on your selection as the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and thank you for supporting your students, not just academically, but also tending to the emotional and social needs. Now please allow Dr. Lauter to present you with your award, and allow our board members to congratulate you after the picture.
Next, we'll have Mrs. Ronnie Boone present the Impact Through Education Awards.
Good evening. Tonight, we will recognize students and staff members from Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School and J.N. Fries Middle School for Impact Through Education Awards. But before we get started, I also want to mention that we have students from J.M. Robinson High School's broadcasting class and their teacher, Ms. Tina Playtech, here with us this evening. They are working on a special project that will air on Channel 21 for us, and we are very excited and appreciate having them here this evening, so we just want to say thanks to them for that. And now on to our Impact Awards. First up is Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Beverly Hills Administrative Team to come forward to stand with their students Our first honoree from Beverly Hills this evening is Carson Doe. Would Carson and his family please come forward? Carson Doe is in a class all by himself. He is the cutest, most caring, and spunkiest first grader you will ever meet. His enthusiasm for learning is obvious to all, and he always works beyond expectations. He reads and writes well above grade-level expectations and goes to another class for enrichment and higher-grade-level instruction. This not only motivates him to excel even further, but it encourages Carson to be a leader. He loves school, and it shows in his personality. One memorable experience of Carson in kindergarten occurred when Superintendent Lauter visited at the beginning of the school year. Carson greeted him, and because he can read at such a high level, he said to the superintendent after reading his name tag, "Hi, Chris." Carson is friends with literally everyone. He makes friends very easily and is known by the entire staff and student body. Congratulations, Carson. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. Our next honoree from Beverly Hills STEM Elementary is Natalie Mesa. Would Natalie and her family please come forward? Natalie is always striving to do her best and help her peers to reach their best. Her coach says, "As an active member of Girls on the Run, Natalie pushes her teammates to always keep persevering." Natalie herself always perseveres and is constantly trying to better herself. Her third-grade teacher said, "She is a wonderful classmate and always looks for ways to help others. She is disciplined and is the true definition of a well-rounded student. She sets goals and works hard to reach them. Natalie is on the right track to becoming a successful adult member of society, and all those who know her look up to her." Her fourth-grade teacher said, "Natalie not only models being respectful, responsible, and safe, she does so with a positivity that spreads throughout the entire class. She is driven and motivated to succeed in everything she works on while being understanding and thoughtful of those around her. Natalie is a sweet and kind young lady who is admired by all. That's why she was selected as an Impact Through Education Award recipient for Beverly Hills Elementary School. Congratulations, Natalie." Jill Carlo is a second-grade teacher at Beverly Hills. She is known as one of the nicest teachers at the school, as she is always so sweet, kind, and loving to all of her students. Jill strives to meet the needs of all of her students individually on a regular basis. Principal Steele says, "Jill is one of the most caring teachers who always demonstrates her advocacy for all children. She treats them with respect while holding high expectations for them, and it does not go unnoticed. She has served as the PTO liaison between the teachers and the PTO, where she supported the needs of the entire teaching staff and worked collaboratively to ensure that they were met. Her desire to meet the needs of her students on a continual basis in her second-grade classroom makes her the choice as the Impact Through Education Award recipient for Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. Congratulations." And our final honoree this evening from Beverly Hills Elementary is Mrs. Harriet Wilson. Would Mrs. Wilson and her family please come forward? Mrs. Wilson is the cafeteria manager at Beverly Hills Elementary. She's worked hard and diligently to get the school qualified for the CEP program, which provides all students with free breakfast and lunch. She's always willing to help out and participate in school activities. She's a friendly face for the students to see in the cafeteria, and she strives to always improve and enhance the existing program to make it better each day. Her desires to always engage in the continuous process improvement make her such a great asset to Beverly Hills. She also leads the best cafeteria staff and always motivates and encourages them to do their best. Lastly, Harriet makes a mean banana nut bread, and was the county bacon contest winner at last year's school nutrition end-of-year banquet. She helps staff pack on the pounds with her bread and other baked goods, and they are so thankful to have her nourishing them all the time. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Now we will move on to our Impact Through Education Awards for J.N. Fries Middle School, and I'd like to invite any members of the J.N. Fries Administrative Team to come forward Our first honoree from J.N. Fries Middle School is Sarindi Iliya Paramal. Would Sarindi, please come forward with her family? Sarindi is an incredibly intelligent and highly motivated young woman. She has a natural curiosity that drives her to gain a better understanding of the world around her by constantly seeking out ways to innovate existing ideas. She naturally seeks to better understand how to benefit humanity and the greater good. In choosing projects, she is always motivated by the need to help others. The combination of her motivation, kindness, helpfulness, thorough work, tenacity, and respectful demeanor have resulted in Sarindi being a true inspiration to anyone she encounters on campus. This award is certainly fitting, as whilst Sarindi may be small in stature, her impact through education is immense. Congratulations. Would Ellis and his family please come forward? Ellis is an eighth grader who exemplifies all the characteristics of a noble knight that J.N. Fries Middle School promotes each day. Ellis has served as a role model to his classmates since his start at J.N. Fries Magnet School in the sixth grade. He is an exemplary student that pushes himself and those around him to excel. His quiet nature and constant encouragement to his peers make him a natural leader in groups. He often provides guidance and support to his classmates, allowing them to see an idea from a new and different perspective. It is not uncommon to see Ellis going out of his way to be kind to others. His teachers consistently remark about his excellence in academics, athletics, and citizenship. His leadership and motivation have been a constant throughout his time at J.N. Fries, making him a very deserving recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations, Ellis. Would Ms. Black and her family please come forward? Tommy Black is a sixth-grade Tommy Black is a sixth grade English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at J.N. Fries Middle School. She started her career at the elementary level and has developed into a remarkable middle school teacher. She displays a complete commitment to her students and amazing creativity in her lesson design. Positive energy seems to be oozing out of Ms. Black's classroom door as a result of her approach to getting students excited about reading and writing. Mrs. Black doesn't settle for the easy route when it comes to designing instruction. By consistently reflecting on her work and looking for ways to make continuous improvement, she truly models the design cycle that is inherent to the STEM program model. Mrs. Black sees the value in providing an emotionally safe learning environment for her students. She genuinely cares about each of her students and they know it. This knowledge allows her to develop strong relationships built around trust. From those relationships, she is able to meet students where they are and provide them meaningful remediation or enrichment that is needed for their individual academic growth. In addition to being an outstanding classroom leader, Mrs. Black has willingly taken on leadership roles beyond the classroom setting. She serves as an Odyssey of the Mind team coach, the English Language Arts and Social Studies PLC chairperson, and a formal and informal mentor to beginning and new teachers to J.N. Fries. Ms. Black has participated in the district's teacher leader cohort and frequently leads professional development sessions for her colleagues. Teachers consistently want to visit her classroom to see what exciting new learning experience she has created for her students and she welcomes them in as a model of best practice. In addition to being lots of fun and a great source of excellent podcast recommendations, Ms. Black is a tremendously valuable member of the J.N. Fries Middle School Noble Knight family and a beyond worthy recipient of this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. And our final honoree this evening from J.N. Fries Middle School is Ms. Bethany Melton. Would Mrs. Melton and her family please come forward? Bethany Melton is an administrative assistant and serves in a front office clerical role at J.N. Fries Middle School. Her helpful and compassionate nature has endeared her to parents, teachers, students, bus drivers, substitutes, and all who connect with the school. Mrs. Melton's job responsibilities are extensive and ever-changing and she adapts to any needs that arise. She willingly takes on the most mundane tasks like updating the school's marquee with a smile and enjoys being challenged with the logistics of schedules that alternate frequently and with little warning. She masterfully handles the basic expectations of a front office secretary, but then she applies the Bethany factor, going far and above and beyond expectations. One of her appreciated efforts is in her role with an ongoing teacher appreciation campaign entitled "It's Great to Be a Knight." Through this campaign, she has coordinated opportunities to make the lives of staff members better. Those opportunities have included outsourcing meal preparation, onsite car washing, lunch deliveries, after-school exercise classes, business-sponsored meals for meetings, and donations of items and services as teachers' gifts. The J.N. Fries Middle School administrators love that Bethany's knowledge of school happenings and desire to help others results in very few voicemail messages for administrators to return. She supports the total school program through representation on the school's leadership team as well as taking a genuine interest in what is happening in the classroom. When she calls into the class, the Spanish classroom over the intercom, she always speaks in Spanish as an opportunity to support the communication and speaking goals of the class. Mrs. Melton's goal, goal that all visitors and callers will feel welcome and leave satisfied helps us all to remember how great it is to be a knight. Administrative assistant is Bethany's, Bethany Melton's job title, but that in no way describes the extent of her efforts to support the students and staff and school community. To watch her simultaneously answer the phone, respond to the buzzer to screen and admit visitors, assist parents with the student sign-up process, and respond to calls on the two-way radio is a sight to behold and a task that many of us cannot keep up with. Beyond that multi-talented and extremely efficient display of skills lies a heart that truly makes the biggest impact through education at J.N. Fries Middle School. Congratulations.
It's always nice to hear all the recognitions and that's, I'll say, the one part of the meeting that we know is stress-free and we don't have to decide anything. So, thank you Ronnie for this. Our next agenda item board members is the approval of minutes for November 1st, 2017 Ethics Training, November 6th Work Session of Public Hearing, and the November 20th Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
No one changed there, did it? I think Dr. Probst was in attendance of our November 1st meeting and I don't see it on the agenda, or I don't see it on the minutes of our attendance.
I guess we should probably add that, right Richard?
You may.
Yeah, she was a public, it was a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
She was there as a member of the public.
Is everyone okay with that modification? No objections? Rob, do you want to second with that modification?
Oh, yes.
Okay, board members, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes with six oh with David making the motion and Rob seconding. Okay, next we'll have the comments and my comments are very brief and simple, just wishing everyone a very Merry Christmas and safe and happy holidays and enjoy the break from school and work for that little bit of time. So, Dr. Lauter?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I wanted to try to explain the issues around K3 class size and the main reason or part of the reason that we're recommending the delay on the Beverly Hills vote. The class size law that's scheduled to take effect next school year will make our class sizes smaller, which as a general rule, people assume is better. The problem is that we were not given significantly more teachers to make this happen. Therefore, we will need more teachers and more classrooms to meet the new law. So, let me give you an example. If 44 students signed up for kindergarten at Beverly Hills Elementary School next year, this year, we would have put 22 kids in each class, two kindergarten classes, each one has 22. Next year, the law will not permit us to put 22 in each class because the maximum for any class will be 21. This year, we would have needed two classrooms and two teachers with 22 in every class. Next year, we will be forced to make that three classes with 15 in two classes and 14 in the other. This will force us to have three teachers and three classrooms to serve the same 44 students. So, it is a significant change and it is actually current law. Because this is such a financial burden to place on all the districts across the state because it's not just us that will be mandated by this, it has been widely believed that the legislature was going to fix this problem and not make the school systems follow the guidelines or come up with a compromise, which is currently what we're working under this year. Because this legislature came back in September, many believed they would address it then, fix the class issue so we could move forward and plan for the next school year. They did not. The legislature is also returning in January. Because schools will need to plan for facilities and for teachers, the assumption was, well, they're going to fix it in January and we'll be able to move forward. In the last 10 days, two things happened that make us think it is much more likely that the legislature will not address this. First, I attended the state superintendent's meeting and we were told the legislature was probably not going to address this in January. This past Tuesday, the Raleigh News &amp; Observer reported that the Senate Majority Leader stated that school districts can make this work and giving up now would mean failing to help students. We also got some more current information today from another senator that said this is not going to be addressed in the January session. After both of these pieces of information, we decided to go back and run all the worst-case scenarios again for class sizes across the district. It appears if we try to have exactly what we have this year, we would need 95 teachers or approximately 95 teachers and between 45 and 50 mobile units and we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions in the schools that are at capacity. Because Royal Oaks and Wyancof are both restart schools and therefore technically do not have to follow the class size mandate, we could still pull off Scenario E. However, after examining all the info, we decided that it was probably cutting it too close and created too much uncertainty for the entire district, knowing that that is likely to be the law for next school year. I want to reiterate what I said a few meetings ago, that this is not a situation with winners and losers. Delaying this decision does not negate what the committee decided and it does not change any of the recommendations that were made. What has not changed is that Beverly Hills is still a facility at the end of its life cycle and there's a brand-new school 3.4 miles away that will have several hundred empty seats. Regardless, waiting a year will provide the answer to some unanswered questions. Will the legislature follow through, provide some type of fix in this scenario? How many students actually return to Royal Oaks and how many sign up for and attend as Magnet students? And how growth has changed in Cabarrus County in one year, which as many of you know, can be quite drastic. It will also provide us with the opportunity to update our 10-year plan and to work with the county commissioners and our county manager to articulate a plan which provides students with the best facility in the most efficient and fiscally responsible way possible. We will continue to work to do all those things to the best of our ability, even when the decisions are difficult. We also have to be flexible enough to handle tremendous growth and to be nimble enough to handle each scenario as it's thrown at us, much like the one that involves the legislature. So, again, we're going to talk about this a little more when we make a recommendation, but I wanted to at least try to explain that scenario and some information that makes it a little more urgent than it was just a week or two ago. And I also would like to reiterate what Ms. Furtinbaugh said and wish everybody a very restful and a happy holiday season.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lauter. We're now at the point where our agenda for guest speakers may address the board. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, as revised by the board on May 11th, 2015, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. Speakers must hand a completed card to the board clerk no later than 6:00 PM, the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. The board chair will decide the time devoted to public comments. Speakers must complete a contact information card, including their name, group name if applicable, address and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. I have three cards that were turned in to Ms. Monroe. Is that all we have? Was there any last-minute cards? Okay. So, our first speaker is Marla B. Lindeman. If you would like to come up, you will have three minutes to speak. Did I say your name correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. I have a difficult name, so I've learned to try to. Okay, if you would turn around and face the board, because we have a microphone up here.
The microphone's right here.
And then it will pick up for the recording.
Oh, okay. I'm not used to having my back to the audience.
And you, let me just tell you, you'll have three minutes and at 20 seconds to go, it will beep to tell you you have 20 seconds to go and then it will beep continuously at three minutes. So, you may proceed.
Do I wait?
No, you may start.
Okay. Well, we all know that immigration creased with a bang during the presidential time of Obama and they were not vetted and some of them were not desirable and so it made it very difficult and these people are still mostly in this nation and that is a problem. Concord, I didn't realize it, but Washington DC says that Concord has a problem in that they have Muslims as teachers and I don't know where they are and I have not been able to find out. Now, it's impossible to tell you all the problems that are caused by this immigration and so we have things that DC says we do have a problem. And the biggest problem is if we don't solve this problem, we're going to have the problem just like Houston, Texas. And they have a real problem. They have areas where it's all Muslims and if you get near it, there's a great big sign that says "No, go." And if you do go, you are subject to death. You would be stoned to death in our streets. Now, if they are in, as teachers, they are using our buildings and our children to attain what they want and that is not what we want. If you have the children for four years, they are a four, more than a four-year-old would attain. So, we either solve it now or we really are in trouble. And we need to solve it, but we have to have discussions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lindeman.
This is Texas. We could be that.
Next, we have Carolyn Klein. Okay, would you come, please come forward?
That's only for public hearings.
That's only for public hearings.
Yes, so these are all, the cards all say they're limited to three minutes in this portion.
Okay, I asked and she said that I would need to ask you.
That's fine, I'll, I'll. Okay, Richard? Who did you say you asked?
At the front desk when she gave me the orange card. And then I went back and showed her that I had the 72 names and she said then I would have to ask you.
Okay, is that fine? Okay, that's fine. She'll reset the timer. You may proceed.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Lauter, school board members. I'm Carolyn Klein, a resident of 3029 Sap Road and I'm here to talk about redistricting. In the midst of the redistricting discussion, I would like to give reasons as to why our community should be permanently redistricted to Mount Pleasant Elementary, Mount Pleasant Middle, and Mount Pleasant High. Earlier today, I sent you a petition with 72 names from SAP, Ashland, Tanbark, Teakwood, and Old Sap Roads. Last week, Adam Troutman spoke to you and presented names from Gregory Road. As we get more signatures, you will be receiving them. I also have copies of the previous Board of Education minutes that I will be referencing tonight and I have copies of the petition or anything like that that you might need. Currently, our elementary students are assigned Currently, our elementary students are assigned to Mount Pleasant. Our children have found a home at Mount Pleasant Elementary and have had a wonderful experience. Our community is rural, and it also shares around a five-mile contiguous border with Mount Pleasant Elementary. We have been in limbo for almost two years while waiting on a permanent decision. At the January 4, 2016 work session, the Student Reassignment Committee presented options concerning where to move the Royal Oaks students during the construction of the new facility. Their recommendation at that time was to move our students to Mount Pleasant Elementary as a permanent reassignment. Also included was the redistricting of students at Concord Middle and High to Mount Pleasant. This was placed on your Agenda of Action for the January 11 business meeting. At that January 11 meeting, your vote was to only make the move for the elementary students, and that it would be temporary. Earlier this month, I watched as we were put on hold again with the presentation of the reaction to, and now, the possible postponement of Scenario 2. It, too, would have permanently moved our students to Mount Pleasant. While we wait, our students are being bounced around. Year 1 could have been at Royal Oaks. Years 2 and 3, Mount Pleasant. Year 4, possibly back to Royal Oaks. And depending on which of the scenarios you choose, Year 5 could either be at Royal Oaks, Mount Pleasant, or Irvin. In the midst of the redistricting county is a group of students on Sap Road, Irish Potato Communities, that by a large majority want to move to Mount Pleasant District. A decision needs to be made now to minimize future redistricting disruptions for our students. Thank you for your consideration and for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. And our third speaker is Branche Conger Shavant.
I've come often enough that you pronounce it beautifully. If the composition of your board changes next fall, I would like to make a few remarks before we meet again. Dr. Lauter, your timing on the deferral of the Beverly Hills issues allows all of us to enjoy the holiday season with a bit less stress and angst. Thank you for that. Mrs. Reimer presented the five informational proposals with consistency and clarity. Composure must come naturally when one chooses to be a high school principal and work with teenagers, because regardless of our views, everyone was treated with calm courtesy. I was the recipient of one such minor moment, and I thank you, Ms. Reimer. Mr. Powell expressed dismay at the dismissive attitude parents received at the Beverly Hills meeting, and we thank you for your reassurance that our opinions have value. It also made the subsequent meetings much less confrontational. Also at Beverly Hills, the nonsense statement was made that our resistance was only about the bell. I do hope by now that everyone realizes that this is not about school versus school or Kannapolis versus Concord, and the bell is a total non-factor to anyone over the age of 18 or 19. Mr. Walker has shown great interest in the issues before you, requesting information, seeking answers and explanations, and knowing that what is sometimes given as data can be personal conjecture. Private pilots are very responsible people, and we thank you for your concerns. In any divisive issue, there is power on one side of the fence and passion on the other. Since the October backpack attack on Beverly Hills, we have been both criticized and presumed to denigrate other school situations. We have meant no offense to anyone or to any school. We are simply trying to protect and preserve Beverly Hills and have great confidence that any other group facing closure would fight as diligently as we are for the continuation of their own school. In the cities where I have lived, urban sprawl has necessitated an increase in sizes of schools, just as it has here. However, in other places, the smaller in-town schools have remained intact to serve their neighborhoods as they have for generations. Many of these schools were more decrepit than you have described Beverly Hills as being, and yet many thrive and have not been sacrificed to the concept that they no longer have value. As Mayor Pageant mentioned, the support for Beverly Hills has extended beyond our community's borders. It is gratifying to know that we have the support of thousands outside of our neighborhood, and it's wonderful to know that we are no longer a small army of 400 families. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
That will be the end of the public comments, guest speakers for tonight. Board members, we now have item 9.01 on the agenda, the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's one tiny little change, and it's really just a typo on Board Policy 6430. On the second and third lines, the words "of the North Carolina General Statutes" were not stricken and should have been. So with that change, I think the consent agenda is probably ready to prove.
Okay, which line are you saying here?
At the end of the second line and going on to the third line of Board Policy 6430, the words "of the North Carolina General Statutes" should be stricken.
Okay, I see that. It says, we had already stricken the chapter and article.
Right.
Board members, are you in agreement, keeping under consent with that change? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes 6-0 with David making the motion and Barry seconding. Next, we have the action agenda, item 10.01, with withdrawal of the proposed redistricting plan recommendation for Royal Oaks Elementary School.
Essentially, we just wanted to formally withdraw that redistricting plan and say that we were going to delay that for a year. We'll bring that back to you next year to decide which plan to follow with Royal Oaks and how that will work, and also to announce or to make sure that it was apparent and to answer questions if board members had them, that because of the issue that we described earlier, which is class size issue and facility issue, we think the best thing to do, because this vote is delayed for a year and because of class sizes, is to not let new magnet students come to Beverly Hills. So currently, there are magnet students that K through 5, and anybody that's at Beverly Hills now, we would continue to provide the service for them as they are there, but for Beverly Hills to be a neighborhood magnet school and magnet students that want a STEM program would be assigned to Wyancoff. So again, because if the law goes through as signed now, we would actually need to place mobile units at Beverly Hills. And for a lot of reasons, we don't think that would be a good decision, and because this is delayed for a year, to say we're going to not make Beverly Hills a STEM magnet to make students that choose that choose Wyancoff. But students who are currently tending as magnet students would still be able to attend with the same services they have now.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a request, or maybe in the form of a motion. We've got a year right now. I would like to make a request or make a motion. We've got a year now, and I noticed that right before all this took place, we had got a lot of emails from some parents, and they had written our county commissioners and saying, you know, "Hey, give us some funds to, you know, help build, rebuild Beverly Hills." But we have really not really gotten some up-to-date totals. Between now and next year, could we maybe get an up-to-date study on what it would cost? I mean, a current study. I mean, we've gotten some type of figures, but maybe get a study of what it would cost, up-to-date study for a neighborhood STEM program, up-to-date. I mean, I know we've gotten some estimates, but what it would cost for a neighborhood STEM program, up-to-date study of what it would cost to update. I know we got a thing saying the school was in fair condition, but what it would cost. So if the commissioners come to us and say, "Okay, what would be the cost to do this, to bring it up to standard and everything? We've got a year now to do this." I would like to put that in the form of a motion to get a cost estimate, what it would cost to bring Beverly Hills up to standard for a STEM program, a neighborhood STEM program to be in effect. What would the cost be? So if the commissioners come back and say, "Okay, what would that cost to bring it up to where it needs to be and everything? What is that cost?"
Okay, let's ask Dr. Lauter, just from the standpoint of a very in-depth study would require funds, and so we would have to have funds allocated to do that. So are you talking something the staff can do, or are you saying to have staff look into, can we spend money?
If staff could do it, but to have that done, could staff do that? Or how much you think it would cost for us to have? I mean, we've got a year to do it. I mean, if you think staff could do it, or do you think we need to allocate some? But to have that done, if the commissioners, I mean, the commissioners, we have not formally asked the commissioners, and I know nothing's on budget, and we'll be doing budget, but I would like to go ahead and have that in hand if we needed to do it. I mean, for us to be prepared. I know we've gotten some estimate, but nothing current.
Yeah, so I would say that the Fanning-Howey study, studied that building, and the staff as part of this process has evaluated that using the, kind of the rubric that comes from the state. And Mr. Schwartz can say if that kind of meets the legal standard. So I would say that that has already happened. Now, if you want a more in-depth or done from a different source, and I think that was something the board would have to direct us to do.
The study, the evaluation that the staff did met the legal requirements for the study under 115(c)(72a). And they used the state form that would have been required if they were demolishing Beverly Hills Elementary School in order to build a new school. So they've done that and filled out the state paperwork on that. You could always do a more in-depth study, and you could always have an outside study. That would be up to the board.
Were there any figures on that?
Yes.
Those documents? What did it say on the documents?
If I recall, the total cost of renovating and getting Beverly Hills Elementary School up to code, if you're just looking at construction, was just around a little over 20 million, and counting design fees, architect fees, and contingency that would ordinarily be required in a construction project, it was just north of 23 million. But Mr. Lauter's here and can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Would it be possible to send those documents to the board?
Those went to the board prior to the business meeting.
Yeah, I think we have.
I believe.
Is that, is that...
Prior to the work session, rather.
Is that up-to-date? I mean, that's current dollars, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you think that would be, I mean, what we could send to the commissioners? Or do you think we should get something that's more detailed?
This is the cost it would take to bring that school up to full standards, not just the $10 million to fix what's broke. Okay, this is the entire cost it would take to build that school up to standards. Biggest issue you have is you don't have enough property to do it. Okay? In order to bring it up to standards, I've got to expand that school to 70,000 square feet to accommodate the same number of students it has today to meet current standards. Adding 20,000 square feet to that site, plus tearing down a building out of it, will be difficult at best, if darn near impossible. We only have 5.05 usable acres where the school sits. It's all we have. The only land we have adjacent to it is less than 3/4 of an acre that the city of Concord owns between there and the water plant. That's the only other property even anywhere close that we can utilize to expand that building. So yes, you can replace the school for significantly, significant dollars, but it's going to probably be for less students, simply because you can't build a school of 70,000 square feet on that site, especially with kids there. Obviously, everything has to be moved off and demolished before you start. That's the difficulty you have.
Yeah, and I just wanted to share that Mr. Lauter did look at adjacent land all around there, and there's nothing that's available that could, if you will, allow that school to spread without taking over homes, you know? And I don't think that's our goal at all.
I mean, we've got that big slope right down south of the school. If you do some kind of flank, fractal right thing, kind of hanging out over the cliff area, it's not going to happen.
But you think that would be adequate enough? You don't think we need to do another study? I mean, you think that would be, I'm just, because I want something, if we need to give something to the commissioners, I just want them to think, make sure that that will be adequate enough to give to them. I'm just making a statement, and I want to make sure that this board is comfortable enough, and I don't want to be a year from now and somebody saying, "Well, that's not good enough." And I'm making a statement at this point. I want to make sure we've got what we need. When the commissioners come to us and we've got it, I just want, I'm making a statement at this point that we've got what we need.
Ms. Carpenter, if you go through the analysis required by the state, and you do the feasibility study for the condition of the building, the condition of the site, and give it a point rating, it doesn't even get half the points it's necessary to even consider renovation or replacement on that site based upon site conditions and the state. But taking that aside, it says you should not go any further to meet the requirements of the state. We went further, did in-depth study, put numbers to it, and that's the number we came up with. Okay? Now, if you wish to hire someone else to even more in-depth study, then you're welcome to do it, but according to the state, DPI says this is not a candidate for renovation, and it's not a site that you, a candidate for a site replacement site. Those two things did not pass to start with. The dollars are just information beyond that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Mrs. Carpenter, we expect in January, as has happened the last few Januaries, to revisit the capital plan, and I think that's when we'll go through more of the what's the give and take on the needs of the district from the whole system view, and what can be done at Beverly Hills is reasonable, like Mr. Lauter said, just to get, we would need more land just to keep the current population of the school. And then the per-seat price continues to go up the lower you make, at the lower capacity of the school.
Well, I think, I think that, and the other thing that I feel, oops, I feel that needs to be addressed, of course, is the two people that bought the petitions, the Granger and the other, well, that one's not your deal. But I think both of those things need to be addressed, whether those people stay or go, because I'm in favor of letting them stay at Mount Pleasant. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think they ought to go ahead and stay at Mount Pleasant.
Cool. Can we put that document that you were just talking about, is that online somewhere? The public can see it as well? Do we put it on our website, or is it, or how does, is it sent to the state already?
It was submitted to you in the last Friday's report before the last board meeting, but I will resubmit it to you again.
I would have it, but how, does the public have it? Is that a public document? Have we sent it to the state?
It has not been submitted to the state.
It's just a working, it's a working document.
We have not made a decision to do away with the school. In other words, this is a document that will be sent to the state should the board decide that they wish to do away with the school. So it has not been submitted to the state, but I'll be more happy to get, make sure you all have copies if you like.
Actually, that document would not have to be submitted to the state because you're not building a replacement school. You're not proposing to build a replacement school.
Okay, but it's being used to weigh a decision, so it should be public somewhere.
Right, it is public, and the board's certainly entitled to it, and, but there's no requirement to submit it to the state. It was just used as part of the study that the board requested at the last meeting, and it was just one additional piece of information that was being put together by the staff.
Okay, so, um, board members, would it be acceptable to address Ms. Carpenter's request when we bring the capital plan, uh, to discussion for update?
So is that to table the motion, more or less, until that time?
Um, no, I, that's, she, or, did you make a formal motion? No one seconded it, I don't think.
Well, uh, I mean, they, y'all said that we had what we needed. I, I just wanted to make sure we had data if, if we needed it, and y'all said we did. Uh, I just wanted to make sure we had some numbers if we did need those, those numbers, and you said we did have it. Uh, so, and the other, other, oops, the other thing that, uh, I wanted to bring up was, uh, definitely, uh, on the two petitions that we had. Uh, one was for Granger Road, and the other one was the SAT petition. Now, personally, I think they should be able to, uh, I don't know if we need to do a public hearing on that other petition that we had. Do we need to do a public hearing on that one? The one we just got in?
Yeah, the challenge with the Mount Pleasant area wanting to stay is, it's not 100%. We've had some people who want to stay at Royal Oaks. So I think we need to figure that out and get that laid out as an option.
At Derry.
To see if they can stay at Royal Oaks, but stay at Royal Oaks without transportation. I don't know what the full answer is.
Well, the majority, that's 73, but we've only, I, we've only heard from one that said they wanted to stay.
Yeah, I know there was one of the speaker, but I thought there was a separate person who had emailed us, maybe not.
But the Granger, I thought that was 100%. We had the Granger one.
It's actually Gregory Road.
Greg, is it Gregory?
Gregory Road, yeah. Instead of Granger, it's Gregory Road.
Gregory? And that's been 100%, is it not?
Well, yeah, I think there's seven students that are on Gregory Road.
And that was, was 100%. Uh, and is that, is there only seven people on that road?
Yes.
And there's another, is there a Troutman Road we, or is that?
It was Troutman Family.
Troutman Family, that was, and I have no problem with, you know, that one going. I don't know if somebody wants to, I'd make a motion for that one. Uh, but do we need to hold a hearing on the other one?
I would think, Rich, I think we probably do need to put that out as proposed just for those two areas that are temporarily Mount Pleasant. We don't need to?
I put that in the form of a motion. If somebody else seconded, I'll take it down. I'll, I, I'm putting that in the form of a motion.
I, I guess I would like to have it definitively defined, and we don't have all that data in front of us right now. Could we put that on the January agenda?
Well, would they, when would they be, would they be going next physical? It would be for next year?
Yeah, for August of 18.
For August of 18?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd just like to have things written down so we know exactly.
Put it on the agenda for next month, then.
You should get a recommendation from staff as well.
Okay, and put those two on there for January.
Again, I think, as, as was stated earlier by one of the speakers, so a year ago, whatever that was, um, we recommended that they be permanently sent to Mount Pleasant or a whole area up there. The board voted not to do that, that they would go back to Royal Oaks. So that was not something that we necessarily entertained as a committee until we got part of the way through and directed by the board. So the staff recommendation, uh, by withdrawing this is to not change anything. Um, because we were, you know, part of the Royal Oaks decision was to clean up the boundaries of four, three or four different schools when we were there, which we will not necessarily do. So our recommendation is leave it the same. You've heard, I think, from people on different areas, some want one, some want another. So our recommendation is if we're going to revisit this next year, um, let's just not, um, do anything. Now, the board can still then follow through with what happened a year ago, change what happened ago, we'll do whatever we're directed by the board. But I think since Mr. Schwartz said, part of withdrawing this is to say, and our recommendation ultimately is F, which is leave everything the way it is now until we revisit it next year. But anything that the board makes a motion for, we'll obviously do.
Well, my feeling on that, these children have been, we, we're supposed to be about the children. And these children have been shuffled or wound too much, and they've been at this school for two years now, and we've, you know, that's what the Board of Education's supposed to be about. We're supposed to think about the children. And we've got to stabilize them a little bit. And to me, I would rather keep them where they've been, and that's why I don't want to keep them in limbo more than we have to. And that's why I think we need to go ahead and make the decision, and let's get them stabilized. And that, that's the reason I'm even thinking about it.
Okay, board members, are you in agreement? We can put this on the January agenda and have the definition of the area in front of us? Is that good, Carolyn?
That's good, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, can I ask a general question to the superintendent, please? Um, we've had hours and hours and hours of public comment. We've had hours and hours of committee work. We've had reports and assessments, we've had data. Um, where is all this going to be kept? How is this all going to be kept so that the next time that we do pick up the next cycle of consideration of redistricting for whatever scope might be in that effort? So that we have the existing data that can be updated and save us some time and save us some, um, effort to, or even to reassess the, the methodologies that we're using now and have, uh, a good product, um, the next time we go into a redistricting discussion? I just want to make sure all the content and all the data is put somewhere, kept somewhere, can be retrieved easily and updated, um, at that time.
Ms. Reimer has all that information, and we'll keep all that information, and we can pick up there with what we've got.
Okay, board members, I'll take a motion that the board approve the withdrawal of the proposed redistricting plan recommendation for Royal Oaks Elementary School.
I'd like to make the motion, please.
Motion by David and second by Carolyn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 6-0. And it is off the table for now.
Okay, now we are to point, I'm going to wait for the fourth finalist to, um, seven candidates.
Turn my mic on. Who applied, uh, to fill Mr. Tim Fur's vacant board seat. Um, so I did call Tim today, tell him we're missing him. We don't like that empty chair anymore, but we'll soon have someone to join that. So I would like to, um, uh, give our audience, um, a little bit of history of what we, um, have, um, done so far. But first, I would like to ask, uh, the board, if I could get a motion that the board adopt the process for selecting a board member to fill an unexpired term. You all have had this, um, to review, and, uh, I think Carolyn and I, or I, have talked to everyone, uh, to see if there were any questions. Do I have a motion to approve the process?
Can I make a motion to approve the process?
Sir.
Thank you.
Need to explain in public what that process is?
Yes, I'm actually going to kind of paraphrase read it to explain it. Yeah, he'll be back in a moment. Yeah. And he's, he's, I know he's read it because I talked to him as well. Um, so, uh, regarding the adoption of the process for selecting a board member to fill an unexpired term, uh, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, so I guess we need to note that Barry was not in the room. So the motion passes 5-0. Barry stepping out. So now for kind of the details, and I also have had this process to review. After the board invited interested individuals to apply for the vacancy on the board by submitting a cover letter and resume, and we did have 21, uh, people submit their information. Each board member individually select their top three preferred applicants and submitted at least two characteristics important to them in their selection of a new board member. Those characteristics have evolved into the questions we will ask the candidates tonight. As board chair, I assembled the responses and returned those results to the board members and suggested that individuals receiving at least three selections be included as the finalists. We had a break in the board preferences, and that was a clean break at three, um, or more, uh, mentions on the board preference list. Uh, and so those four, um, in alphabetical order were Laura Blackwell, Holly Grimsley, Dr. Robert Kirk, and Dr. Jeff Phillips. Prior to the meeting tonight, each finalist was asked to certify and writing that they meet the qualifications for election to public office as required by the North Carolina Constitution and state law, and Mr. Schwartz each has done so.
That's correct.
The board attorney is, is part of this process, is going to conduct a random draw of numbers to determine the order of the speakers because the rest of the process is dependent on that. So I'll continue while you prepare that. Each finalist will be asked to provide a two to three minute opening statement regarding their interest and motivation in seeking this board seat. Finalist number one, by the draw of numbers, will speak first. Um, following the opening statements for each candidate, one question will be asked of each finalist, and it will be the same question for each, um, beginning with finalist number two. We don't want to put the same person on the hot seat first, so we're going to rotate around the numbers. Um, after the opening statement and the question, the first question, the board will be asked to pick their top two finalists by a signed written ballot. And that is, the intention of that is to, uh, ensure we are making independent decisions, uh, and we don't want to put our finalists on the spot, so Mr. Schwartz would then just now, will name the top tallies. The top two finalists, or if there is a tie, it could be three, may continue to the next round of questions. At that point, the remaining finalists will be asked to, um, question number two, proceeding in reverse order with the numbers originally drawn. Uh, question three will then be asked of each finalist, again rotating the order. Um, each candidate will be allowed up to three minutes to answer each question. So, uh, to Ms. Blackwell, Ms. Grimble, Mrs. Grimsley, Dr. Phillips and Dr. Kirk, you'll have the same three minute allowance, and it'll be but 20 seconds. So just ask you to respect that time. At that point, uh, the board will engage a discussion with each member being asked to indicate their top choice, and we will do that verbally. Um, thereafter, the chair will accept nominations from amongst the finalists, followed by a vote. And the nomination does not need to be in a mo, in a motion at that initial time. Uh, we can put two or three on the floor if the board members desire. If three candidates make it to the second round of interviews, and all three are nominated, and none receives a majority of four votes, then the candidate with the fewest votes will be dropped from the list, and a subsequent vote will be taken with the two finalists. If there's a tie that prevents the elimination of a candidate, then the chair will reopen the nominations and repeat the process. In the event of a 3-3 tie between two nominees, we'll have further discussion followed by a second vote. If there's still a tie after two rounds of voting with, uh, with either two or three nominees, the chair will ask for a motion to elect one candidate to be sworn in at the beginning of the first board meeting in January. That motion would require a second in a vote. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, will you please select the order of speakers?
All right, the first speaker will be Dr. Phillips. Second speaker will be Dr. Kirk. Third speaker will be Laura Blackwell, and the fourth one will be Holly Grimsley.
Okay, the first, um, or the opening statements, um, which the topic was previously sent to the candidates, would you please describe to the board in three minutes or less your interest and motivation in seeking this board seat? So, Dr. Phillips?
That is there.
Well, good evening. I may not be tan, but I'm rested and ready. I'm ready to work and to collaborate with you, which I think I have shown that I have been able to do in the past. Um, the reasons, um, why I would like to serve on the board are multiple. First of all, the, uh, public schools are public good, and they benefit all of us. We, we all benefit whether we have a child in school or not, when a child gets a good education, and we all suffer when they do not. And so I can hardly think of a more important task than to serve on the board. And in my 30 years of work, I don't think that I've done anything as important as the four years that I spent on the Cabarrus County School Board. Why do I, where can I help? Well, I think our teachers need help. Um, teaching is not as attractive a profession as it was when we were in school. And while there's not a lot that the board can do in terms of, of, uh, remuneration, there is things we can do, um, to, to make, to perhaps take off a few burdens on teachers and to let them know that we care. Another reason, or, um, talent that I can bring to the board is, is my background in energy. I'm, I'm an energy researcher, and, um, energy is one of the key and growing, uh, sectors in the regional economy. And so it's very important that we have students that are prepared to go to work in that sector. And so our STEM schools are, are very much, uh, close to my heart, and I will make, I do my best, uh, to steer them in the right direction. I guess a final thing that I will, would bring to the board is geographic diversity. I don't believe any of you live in the Cox Mill High School District, uh, but I do, and I think it's important to have a spread, um, across the county. Couple of other considerations. If, if you appoint me to this position, I will not run for a full term. I want to make sure that it would be an open position, um, that everyone would have equal access to, um, for a full four-year term. And then finally, you know, I, I have not lobbied you for this position. I value my relationship with each of you, and trust me, I will not be offended if you pick someone else. I will still greet you heartily wherever I see you. And, um, so with that, I end. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Uh, Dr. Kirk?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, distinguished board members, Dr. Louder, Cabarrus County School staff, and certainly the members of our community, those behind me that are left, and those in our viewing audience, good evening. My name is Robert Kirk, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself, though this really isn't about introducing myself. This is about vision sharing. Where are we going as a board? What can I contribute to your efforts here? What can we do as a collaborative entity? The Book of Proverbs reminds us, for lack of a vision, the people perish. Educational leadership demands visioneering, and I am a person who believes leadership is predicated upon an empathy for the people being led, an understanding of the environment in which leadership occurs, and a desire to affect change with vision. As educational leaders, we do need to keep our eye on the ball, that is, on learning. And I certainly look to Lozot in his Corollas for Effective School. Educators must ensure our school system is steadily moving forward on the mission of learning for all, emphasis for all. System-wide, our expectation for school leadership needs to ensure that school standards are achieving a safe and orderly environment. Ms. Carpenter, that's a heavy on your hit list. A climate of high expectations for success, instructional leadership, a clear and focused mission, an opportunity to learn and a high level of student time on task, frequent monitoring of student progress, an improving homeschool relation, and functioning professional learning communities. These corollas codify the role in relationships with students, parents, teachers, and support staff, and actually keep the Board of Education on task as well. Then they articulate that leadership mandates change, and along with that, a constancy of purpose. Having been with Cabarrus County Schools over the past 15 years, both as a school teacher, dropout prevention coordinator, assistant principal, principal, having attended over 10 years, man, brutal, uh, Board of Education work and business sessions, uh, the past seven have been closed sessions, uh, I have seen our board demonstrate this very constancy of purpose. Our successful boards have led by sharing a common vision, have led by serving, have led by consensus building, have led by transparency of practice, have led by reciprocity of accountability and capacity, have led by being visible, have led by inspecting, not just expecting, have led by valuing individual differences, have led by gaining profound knowledge, have led by communication which is bi-directional, open, frank, and constructive. The very process we're engaged in this evening is a testament to our community's engagement to our school system. Those who have stepped forward to offer their services actually are all stellar, all strong. Those who have stepped forward to offer their services actually are all stellar, all strong, all bringing their, thank you, all bringing their, yes, dear, all bringing their individual strengths to this noble cause of education. Distinguished board members, I appoint to you that you are in the catbird seat. Whoever you choose tonight will contribute to our constancy of purpose of improving education at Cabarrus County School. May wisdom guide your steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk. Mrs. Blackwell?
Good evening, Chairwoman Furtinbaugh, Vice Chair Carpenter, members of the board, and Dr. Louder. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be here with you this evening. My core motivation for filling this vacant position is my passion for people and for this community. I am a servant leader. This is evident by my various boards, leadership roles, volunteer opportunities, and even my willingness to run for public office. My daily occupation at the Cancer Center as Guest Services Coordinator is based on my main objective to serve and unite patients, care partners, physicians, and my teammates. My abilities go far beyond that of understanding budgets, policies, and guidelines. My role requires me to be a unifier, a collaborator, a motivator. I am able to offer the unique perspective of not only being a teammate, but also a patient. I am able to bring that missing voice to the table when there are important decisions that need to be made at the hospital. I have seen firsthand the amazing results that can happen when all of the stakeholders are brought to the table. I have also seen many negative impacts of not having the right stakeholders present. It's expensive, it's inefficient, and it causes division. I am able to bring this same voice to the school board by being the only mother of children that are currently enrolled in Cabarrus County Schools. That is a very valuable piece that is not currently being represented on the board. Having this voice represented is extremely relevant and would be a tremendous asset to the board and to this county. The fact is, Cabarrus County is growing, and not just growing, but thriving. Part of the reason we have a successful and growing community is because of our successful and growing school system. Our success is measured by more than just our state ranking. Our job is to ensure that our children in the community receive the highest quality education. These children that are impacted are our future parents, taxpayers, and voters. My motivation to serve on this board resides at 231 Canvas Back Court, but also resides at every home in this county. I truly believe that when you consider who would be the best fit for this board, the best at being able to work with each of you, and the best at collaborating with and unifying this community, you will see that I am the right choice. That is why I'm asking you to choose me this evening, and I look forward to working and serving alongside each of you.
Thank you. Mrs. Grimsley?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Louder. I must say, it is definitely a different perspective being on this side of the podium. I am Holly Grimsley. I am the same person that was elected in 2004 and re-elected in 2008 to this board, as all of you know, with the exception of your new board attorney, just with a different last name. When Mr. Fur called to discuss with me his resignation for the board, I truly could understand and relate to his predicament. 2012 was a very hard and challenging year for me as well, as Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Furtinbaugh probably remember, as we served together. My dad was placed on the heart transplant list in Kentucky that year, and it was very difficult for me to travel back and forth in a construction company and to handle some of the other personal life issues I was dealing with. So therefore, I chose to take a time out and go up and take care of my dad and do the things that I needed to do. And of course, he was not a transplant recipient, but actually, over time, received a heart pump, which afforded me the ability to return to my home in Cabarrus County, and I do call Cabarrus County my home. I was a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School. My son's a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School, and I currently have a grandson enrolled at Irvin Elementary. And if you will, I would just like to read a couple of excerpts from my cover letter that you have. I think it best summarizes my qualifications and the reason I asked for consideration for the appointment. I believe my knowledge as a licensed general contractor who deals with construction on a daily basis, my past history and experience as an elected school board member from 2004 through 2012, along with the leadership I provided during that time, surpasses the criteria needed for this role. During my time on the board, we built many schools and added the new programming of the existing PLC, the Early College, STEM, and IB programs. Therefore, I have a real understanding and an extensive knowledge of the redistricting process and what it takes to maintain these programs. During my time, we created the budget process you currently still use, and I understand very well the budget details and how it is compiled from the federal, state, and local levels. As a prior chair to this board for two years, I attended many of the Chair, Vice Chair meetings between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, so I know firsthand the importance of a positive working relationship and the impact it has on our community. So I believe that I am the correct person who can hit the ground running, so to speak, and have been attending your board meetings this past year for current discussions and decisions that are being made, and also believe that these are continued conversations. And with that, I will be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Mrs. Grimsley. We're not going to ask questions other than the ones that each of you will now answer. So for the first question, we will go in the order of Dr. Kirk, Ms. Blackwell, Mrs. Grimsley, and Dr. Phillips. And welcome, Mr. Fur. Would you like to come up and sit until someone? The first question, I'm going to give a little explanation, and I'll repeat it for each of you if you like. There are often competing issues among vocal groups that advocate on critical issues before the board, and this is in particular timely, so we're not picking on anyone from Beverly Hills or any other schools, but this is a real thing we have to deal with, as many of you know and observe. These issues may include student assignment, transportation, testing, academic programs, and equity issues. Please share your process in considering and deciding your vote, including how you would balance the needs and desires, desires of a portion of our CCS families or staff with the needs of the entire system. So, Dr. Kirk?
Thank you. Nice, soft pitch for Starz, I appreciate that. I think it's important above all that we're constantly have that consistency of purpose and knowing what we have done, that it's predictable, that our decisions do follow. Certainly, we're compliant with existing policy, we're compliant with our code of conduct, we're compliant with ethics and policies, law. So in any decision we make, we need to kind of go to what are our guidelines, both stipulated within the confines of law and our board and school policy. I think we also need to understand that leadership calls for examining the policy, that as leaders, we cannot hide behind a stated policy and let that make the call for us. We have to consciously make that logical decision. I'm a firm believer that staff does a heck of a lot of research. When they come forward with a recommendation, when they come forward with a suspension or assessment of what went down, it's very important that we, as board members, listen to the work they're doing. We are co-yoked with staff, we are not, it is a collaborative effort, it is not a combative effort. We're not on, we're on the same team, and we've got to keep our eye on the distant horizon, we've got to keep true to our vision of serving our community. So I think we do need to listen to those voices, at the same time adhere to established protocols that have held us in good stead over the years.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk. And next, we'll have Ms. Blackwell.
As you said, there are many decisions that will have to be made on the school board, and those do require an effort to bring all of the voices to the table that are impacted. That means the community, the students, the school board, the county, all of the, all of the folks that are vested and share, and stakeholders in it are needed and required to be at the table. That is what I do. I bring all of those voices to the table. I think it's very important to do that. We all know that there are decisions that have to be made that are difficult, and we all know that you cannot please everybody. That is part of what we do as being leaders, making those decisions, bringing those voices to the table, uniting the people, and having them understand what the reason is behind the decision that is made. I really honestly believe that if you are transparent in the community and explain to people the reasons behind the decisions that are made, they're very open to understanding that. As Dr. Kirk said, we're all in this together. We are a team, and, and part of doing that is making sure that everyone is on the same page with why those decisions are being made. So I think once you do that, once you bring all of those voices to the table, then you will unite the community behind whatever decision it is has to be, that has to be made, even those tough decisions that have to be made, that include redistricting or potentially having to close a school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blackwell. Mrs. Grimsley?
You know, it's ironic, in 2003, my very first committee that I served on was the Blue Ribbon Committee, which was comprised of school board people, staff, board members, and county staff, and commissioners, and lots of business people in the area. That is actually how I started being very involved with the school system, other than being PTO president or involved with my, my son's individual school. So I learned firsthand how important that it is to bring everyone to the table. That was very vital then, and it's still very, very vital today, and it continues to be through that timeframe and always will be. It's very important to hear from the people that is affected by something and, or an individual's opinion, I guess, to be brought before us as the board to understand how it impacts their lives, and it's also very important for those people to hear what decisions that is being made by the board, how it's going to affect the complete community. We have done that. There have been committees that have worked really well, there are some that did not work as well, but out of all of it, I think both sides heard each other a little bit better, there was more information shared, and all understood as they walked away a little bit better. My thought is restructuring, and I'll just take, for instance, the construction, excuse me, construction standards that we were a part of, my time with the board, that was very important. Construction is something that you are heavily involved with today, it has a huge impact on how many schools are being built, the capacity, how many students that are coming in, it's just a huge issue. The construction standards that we were part of writing, and I so hope that y'all are still using those, or at least updating them, was something that was new, but very much needed as it is today, it will continue to be, as always will be, the committees for stakeholders, and I believe that is very vital and very important. Thank you.
And, Dr. Phillips?
I think the most important thing you have to do on the board is to keep an open mind, don't lock down a position and say, "I'm not moving no matter what." I know when I came to the board, I was firmly of the belief that the magnet programs that we had at J&amp;Free should be for the academic elite. That was how we would be able to hold those students in our district rather than having them flee to charter private schools. But while I was on the board, Mr. Walter argued passionately that if a student has an interest in STEM, they should be able to go to a STEM magnet school, and if they mess up at a couple of grade, classes, we shouldn't kick them out. And that made me remember that I, in middle school, was not selected to go into algebra in eighth grade, because I was not considered an elite at math, and yet somehow I managed to get a PhD in mechanical engineering. And then Dr. Louder showed me data that students actually perform better when they're in a group that has a variety of academic strengths in it. And he showed me what we did with the students that we did bring in that did not score really high on the EOGs, and yet they thrived in, in J&amp;Free's, and that made me realize that I needed to rethink. And so I think that's, that's, one of the most important things is you have to keep an open mind, particularly when you're getting bombarded with, you know, 50, 100 emails on an issue. You have to read through them, because sometimes there'll be a little nugget that comes from somebody, and you go, "Oh, I hadn't really looked at it that way before, but you know what? They're right." And I had that situation when we were arguing about what to do with J&amp;Free's, and we were also focused on the impact of the students that were in J&amp;Free's, and whether we, yeah, can, is there a way that we can ease their pain if they have to transition to another school? And finally, a parent pointed out to me that the students that we were going to be moving out of CC Griffin, some of them were going to be ripped out of, therefore, only the eighth grade to spend at J&amp;Free's, and I said, "You need to look at it from their side." And it's like, "Oh, yeah, that's true." And so we ended up saying that we were only going to transition students that were coming into sixth grade, that were currently living in the CC Griffin area. So that's, that's kind of the takeaway that I have from my time on the board, is keep an open mind, listen for little nuggets, and I guess maybe the last thing would be that we should strive for no surprises, so that we're open with the communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. At this time, board members, I ask you now to pick your top two finalists by signed written ballot to be submitted to Board Attorney Richard Schwartz. Did you prepare a ballot, or you just wanted to use paper?
No, I didn't. Grab a piece of paper, write your name down, the top two candidates.
And please sign it.
Don't number them, don't put it in sequential order, just two names and your name.
And Richard's going to tally them, but he's only going to tell us the top people, not necessarily the numbers.
Madam Chair and board members, the top two vote-getters are Dr. Kirk and Dr. Phillips. And they move on to the next round.
Okay, congratulations to Dr. Kirk and Dr. Phillips, and Mrs. Grimsley, Ms. Blackwell, thank you very much for your participation. attributes which are essential.
One more time, please.
I have to get back to my question. What do you see as your priority and responsibilities as a school board member, and what qualities and attributes are essential for successful school board members?
I think for the past 15 years, as Cabarrus County has continued to grow and burgeoning, the exploding population of our school system and our community calls for a forward-looking, leaning into the future in preparation. We cannot wait for the future to hit us between the eyes next week. Several things come to mind, the shifting demographics within not only our nation, but within this very community. We need to be prepared, our educators need to be prepared, to face the cultural and linguistic challenges of our school system. Take a look at priorities. We need to be ready for that change. Not only bricks and mortar, which has been dogging us for ever since, certainly for the past 15 years, as the discussion even tonight. We are in a tailchase. And as we build west, and as we continue to look at the new elementary school, we are already behind the power curve. So priorities are internal, in terms of the educational panorama of shifting culture and languages, and externally, as to where do we house these students. So I think those are priorities that we need to be thinking about and preparing for, and asking the staff to help us in that regard. I think quality, and I think Dr. Phillips kind of nailed it, we need to be, have an open mind. We need to be conscientious in our decision-making process, know what we're up against, look at the data, indeed, keep the students, student in mind, but the data-driven decisions. We've got to, we can't go, I think, we've got to see what the data tells us, and wisely make our calls. So the ability to, to do a good data dig, to hold each other accountable, to be transparent and vulnerable, to say, "I don't know," or please educate me in this area, to be able to swallow our pride at times and, and actually share, share our thoughts and our views. I think openness and transparency, listen with integrity, don't listen with our minds already made up, withhold certainty. When you start talking to me, I have to wait until you finish, and then respond. And respond is the operative word, not react. So I think the ability, as Covey would say, to seek to understand before we seek to be understood, to listen adroitly, to withhold certainty, and to be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk. Dr. Phillips? And I'll restate the question, two-part question. What do you see as your priority and responsibilities as a school board member, and what qualities and attributes are essential for successful school board members?
I'll answer the second part first. I think it's important for a school board member to seek compromise when there's disagreement, so that we can finally find areas where there is agreement and, and move forward with that. The, the other thing is, and this was something that Lynn Shue taught me very early on when I was on the board, is that you need to, it's important to be a team player. And, and when you lose a vote, you have to accept that and move on, and, and recognize that that is now the board policy, and you need to support that and make it a success. Now, as far as my priorities and responsibilities, I think my, my number one priority is, is a graph that's haunted me ever since I created it, which was when I plotted the school grades, basically the EOGs, you know, the percentage of students passing EOGs versus the percentage of kids that are free and, free and reduced lunch. And it's just a straight line. And so the, our, our better off families have kids that perform better than our families that are poor. And, and we need to try to strive to do something to flatten out that curve, not by reducing the performance of the kids from the more well-to-do areas of the county, but by raising the other end of that curve. And as far as responsibilities, our number one responsibility is to make sure that our students are safe from all threats, and, and so that, that has to be number one. And that's not just from outside threats, it's also from having a building that is, is up, up to standard. And then we have to live within our means. I think all of you, it amazed me, you know, we, we really did all want the same thing, which was we wanted every child in this county to get a good education, but we didn't want to spend any more than we had to, to make that happen. So that would be my responsibility. Thank you. And I think I stay up here for the next question.
Uh, yes. I guess that would be practical, since it's only a round robin of two. And the final question is, to what extent, if any, do you believe board members individually or collectively should have a role in the day-to-day operation of the district?
Well, I, I look at the school board as, as kind of the equivalent of the Board of Trustees for a college. The Board of Trustees for a college sets the strategy and picks the, the top person and advises that person based on the knowledge that they have as to the decisions that they should make. But I don't think I, in my years in college, I never saw a Board of Trustees member come into a classroom. That's the responsibility of the staff and, and the superintendent. So, no, my, my, my view is that, that we need to be the eyes and ears of the community that feeds into Dr. Louder, and, and also that helps him communicate out to the community the decisions and the challenges that our school district is facing. We also, because we're elected politicians and not a public servant, we have the ability to lobby the state legislature and the county commissioners on behalf of our school district to tell them the things that we need in order to succeed. I hope that our superintendent will, will also speak forcefully when he sees that there's a need for changes in policy, but he also needs to be very diligent that he is nonpartisan. So with that, I yield back the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Dr. Kirk? And the question, again, is, to what extent, if any, do you believe board members individually or collectively should have a role in the day-to-day operations of the district?
I think it's important that we recognize our role as board to provide the guidance, the oversight, and to keep an eye on the distant horizon, to be, as Dr. Phillips already mentioned, the, the ears and eyes of our community, and funneling those comments to our superintendent. I would hate to advise a neurosurgeon on the ins and outs of his surgery when he's performing surgery. I think sometimes we need to respect the professionalism of our staff, those that know where the rubber meets the road, and that can enact the policy that we indeed are overseeing. And that does not mean we abdicate our responsibility. There's accountability piece that we expect the staff to be. And understand, this is a collaborative effort, it is not a combative effort. It's not us versus them. So I think in that regard, the board should refrain from necessarily getting nitty-gritty, though understand what's happening at the nitty-gritty level, because we are responsible to the, to the voters, that we have proper pedagogical skills in place, that our educators are indeed creating that environment for all. And we have a gentleman called superintendent who we're holding his feet to the fire for the day-to-day operation. And so I would support that, that, that view precisely. And I think, much like Avatar, we've got to look up, need to be our voice at Raleigh, that we are in the pickle we are today because of, I think, some, some poor legislative action. And we've seen some really, some good pieces leave from this board to Raleigh, challenging some of the decisions that have been made. And I think we need to continue to press for the betterment of our school system and security and safety and education of our children in Cabarrus County schools.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk. Okay, that is all the questions we had in the process. Board members, I will now ask each of you to announce your preferred candidate. This is not a nomination yet, but to see if we have consensus to perhaps make a nomination. And at this time, we can, I'll say, entertain board discussion as well. So after each board member has spoken, I'll then be asked, I'll ask you for the nominations, formal nominations, to be followed by a vote.
Mr. Schwartz, we okay so far?
Yes, you're right on target.
And Mr. Powell, would you like to start?
Dr. Kirk?
Any comments, or?
We'll see what the nominations...
Okay.
Bring.
I'll also go with Dr. Kirk.
Ms. Carpenter?
Dr. Kirk.
Okay, I'm going to break the roll here. I would like to, to be able to work with Dr. Phillips, so. Not that I don't love Dr. Kirk too, but... Mr. Schumaker?
I'd like to work with Dr. Kirk, just because I haven't ever had a chance to work with him at a different, at this level before.
Okay.
I like Dr. Phillips, too.
And Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, I, I like that. Don't get me wrong.
Oh, Dr. Kirk.
Shall we go to a nomination, Mrs. Carpenter?
I move to accept Dr. Kirk to fill Tim Fur's position.
Okay. Actually, we need to be very precise on this motion.
Actually, it's, yes.
I move to nominate Dr. Kirk to fill Dr. Fur's position.
We actually, okay, I'm going to read it just because we have to include the, the date, the swearing-in date in the motion. So the motion here is that moved and seconded that the board accept nominations for a vote. Actually, we can just go to restrict a vote, can't we, Richard?
You can accept nominations and see if you get more than one nomination.
Okay.
So you're at number 11 now.
Go, um, move that the board accept nominations for a vote in accordance with the adopted procedures for selection of a new board member to be sworn in at the first board meeting in January 2018 to fill the remainder of the unexpired term of Mr. Tim Fur. So Vince, you want to make that motion?
So moved with Dr. Tim Fur.
Dr. Tim Fur?
I'm sorry? Dr. Robert Kirk. Nobody believed me, Dr. Tim Fur.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, so are there any other nominations?
Moved nomination to close.
Okay, do we need to close the nominations?
Yes, well, you can. You can move the, close the nominations and accept by acclamation if you'd like.
Okay.
Moved to, uh, acclamation.
Okay, so move for nominating Dr. Kirk. Second?
I will second that acclamation.
Okay. All in favor of nominating Dr. Kirk for the unexpired term?
Aye.
Aye?
Just to elect.
What's that?
To elect him.
To elect. Dr. Kirk to fill the unexpired term, starting in January 2018?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
It's a board election.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so six-zero. Congratulations, Dr. Kirk. You'll be joining us soon. So, Tim, sorry, it's over.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, y'all didn't listen to me.
And board members, I would like, maybe if we would all share our appreciation for Tim Fur's service. We have enjoyed being your colleague and your friend, Tim. So thank you for coming to observe tonight.
Howdy, boys, Tim.
Yeah, we'll have to do that. Okay, at this time, the board will go into closed session. And Richard, can I read the second statement after the first? Okay. "I'll take a motion for the board to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged and consider the pending case of Cabarrus County Board of Education versus Department of State Treasurer et al. pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee to review personnel recommendations. I need to add to the, to that language, that we will also include the pending case of Catherine Harris versus the State of North Carolina, North Carolina Teachers and State Employees Retirement System, Darth DeBarry Shepherd, Catherine Auger, and Gary Austin.
I'll make the motion as you just stated it.
Thank you. Do you mind repeating it, Rob?
And I'll second.
Okay, motion by Rob and second by Carolyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the board is in closed session with a six-zero vote. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and have a good holiday.